And he's, he's had nothing, he's not allowed to do horseback riding in school or anything right now due to, due to the risk factors. And we came up with the idea, and he loves chickens. So he loves when we go to the farm and he sees the chickens there. And we thought, oh, wouldn't that be great? And he, of course, thought that was great. And until we found out that there is no, you know, Hampshire doesn't allow chickens. So then we came across the petition that's been circulating about a year ago. And I know as of today, there's almost 1,200 signatures of people from Hampshire that are extremely interested in, in having chickens in Hampshire. So I, I would just like to quickly present some information on what I found after exploring the possibility with surrounding villages. I've done some phone call and just some late work to see what their experiences have been, positive, negatives. And it was all, it was very positive. The, the only negative thing that came up was that some people didn't know the difference between the chickens and the roosters. And so they would, you know, accidentally get a rooster and then they had to find a farmer that would take it for them. But because roosters are not typically allowed, you know, when you have residential backyard chickens. So I talked to somebody at the village in West Dundee today, and she said they've had the program going for eight or nine years, and it's been nothing but community building. They have a Facebook group. She said it's been great for families. They, they've had really no negative things to report. So I kind of went through, you know, all the different towns, the villages that allow it. And I was shocked that St. Charles, Downers Grove, Fox Lake, Genoa, McHenry, Wakanda, Sugar Grove, Alburn, Elgin, et cetera, a lot of, a lot of, you know, a lot of surrounding villages do allow it. And everything I've come across has been extremely positive. The, the only difference is that some of the guidelines vary from village to village, like some villages only allow four. And they have very strict, you know, you've got to have a certain size pen in a certain fenced-in area. But everything that I came across was positive. And for our special needs son, he, he's never raised anything, you know, from a baby that could become, you know, a hen and then produce eggs and, and, and have that experience, you know, it's, it's typically just the kids that live out in the country and, and are, you know, not residential. So I also explored, you know, some of the people, I think on Facebook, they've talked about, you know, are they messy? Well, according to everyone I've talked to, they said they're really not. When they're in a pen, you clean it maybe every week. They, chickens eat insects and, and bugs from your yard, which I thought was great. And you have a garden, it's free fertilizer. And, and so everything I gleaned from it was very positive. And as far as the noise, there are, there, that was never an issue with any of the villages. They said that the decibel of chickens, hens, is the same as a human being talking out in the backyard. It's, it's no different. And I did come across two breeds that are very quiet. So kind of a, you know, I'm, I'm not looking for anything that's, I want something very docile, if that, if we can ever, you know, come to that. And the buff orpington and the black ostril are extremely desperate, riot birds. So, so anyway, just, I just wanted to present this information. I was very surprised at the community building that I, that I heard in the family building. They said the kids helped construct the coop and added their, you know, it, it was really an experience for kids and families alike that can't otherwise do that when they're in town. So, you know, I hope you find this information helpful. I have a lot more information that I won't, you know, bother you with tonight. And, you know, I hope that this possibility could be considered, you know, because for families like us and for many other families, I know it's something that for our son, he right now doesn't have much going on. And it just provides a purpose. And I think it's great for families. And if, you know, if guidelines are pretty strict, you know, as far as spelled out, and, and there's quite a few townships like Naperville has a very, very strict and very successful program. So, you know, I really appreciate your time. And I just wanted to bring this to the attention of the board. So thank you for your time. And if anyone has any questions, I have notebook here full of, full of chicken information right now. So.
I really appreciate you speaking to us tonight.
Well, thank you. And thank you all for your time. And as I said, if you have any questions, I'd be glad, I'd be glad to even do more exploring. I just had to cut it off after a few days of, it was very positive. And it, I think it was, not that I need anything else to, to do, you know, or take care of, but if it helps give our son a purpose. Right now, he's in the background. And something that he, you know, he always loves to bring things and drop them at grandma's doorstep, you know, to bring grandma a few eggs that, that his chicken laid would just be, I think, an awesome experience. But thank you for your time. He says his name is Max Wevers. I hope you got.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to sign off so you can go on with your meeting. But I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Bye, Max.
Say bye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else?
There was a second signee, however, it appears she has left the building. So we'll pass on Eileen Doak.
I just made 20 bucks.
Yes, please do.
All right. All right. Mr. Hedges, or, oh, I think we're going to do, you wanted me to do this proclamation first, right?
We're in minutes yet.
Oh, no, that's true. Okay. So before you, there are minutes from August 19, 2021. Can you review the, any deletions or additions or corrections?
This is trustee Kelly. I have two corrections that need to be made. Under, what page is this? I don't have the page number, sorry. It's the ordinance proposing the establishment of a special service area number 29 in the village. The minutes have me as voting nay. I voted in the affirmative in that one.
Did catch.
And the same is for an ordinance pertaining to the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund for the village of Hampshire. Has me voting nay in that. And I believe we unanimously voted yea on that.
The other changes or corrections? Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from August 19, 2021 with the changes as noted. Questions or comments? Welcome vote, please.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Cole.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Polistrini.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Fodor.
Aye.
Okay. So I, do you want me to do the proclamation now or then?
Now, if you're good.
Okay. So there was a, an individual that contacted us, actually two individuals over the course of the last couple of weeks about pediatric cancer awareness. And so Denise Tatum actually went down to St. Charles, a bunch of signs that you guys see all around town to raise awareness of pediatric cancer. And an individual that doesn't live here, but she lives in North Aurora, her son Avery is in relapse right now with a form of pediatric cancer and is in treatment. So in 2008 or so, President Obama recognized September as a National Pediatric Cancer Awareness Month. And so I have a proclamation here, which I, I don't want to read, I don't want to read it all the way. But it basically is one in 285 children will be diagnosed with cancer before their 20th birthday, and 46 children per day were, what, 16,790 children a year are diagnosed with cancer. And so it's, it's kind of like staggering facts, right? Like we've all done our research over the years and hear about it on the news. But, you know, interesting fact such as like you, you, the average age for a kid to get diagnosed is six years old, where the average age of an adult is 66. So really, it's just a worthwhile cause. And so I'd like to proclaim the September 2021 is childhood cancer awareness month in the village. Okay. Mr. Hedges, you're up.
I'm actually, Mr. President, I think you're up.
Okay.
We're handling the appointments under your authority.
So as we were kind of moving forward with things, right, we, we handle our commissions and now we, we finally have a clerk, right? Because she wasn't appointed, but now she's appointed. Next on the to-do list, checking it off one at a time, is our village engineer. And to my understanding, maybe Brad or Jay can correct me on this, we haven't actually appointed a village engineer in several years.
Correct. We've never really had a contract with, with EEI. And speaking to Brad over the course of the last 18 months, I learned that, I believe we might be the only village that they work with that does not have a contract, or at least one of the few. And so Brad actually presented a contract to me back in January or February. And then when, when Mayor Reed wanted to make official appointments, so we were going about it this way. It is my firm recommendation that we, that you support the president's nomination of, of EEI as the engineering firm. We have before you a contract. I would like to point out one thing in addition to the contract, and that's a, at the end of the contract, you'll see something called general engineering services retainer calculation. It's not actually a part of the contract, but it's, it's an interpretation. One of the things that we've always struggled with is when we have, when we need advice from EEI, that we don't have a specific project. And it's not something that developer's going to reimburse us for, we just don't know how much to budget. So what we've done is, is Brad and I identified those types of things. So you'll see those specifically delineated here. And I, I asked for a discount. And I, to be frank, I asked for a 50% discount on those, on those items. And Brad was generous enough to offer a 60% discount. So what this means is that the village will be getting 30, almost $32,000 worth of engineering staff time for $1,000 a month or $12,000 a year. So this will reduce our cost of engineering and also be very specific about what things are, are included and what are not. So when, when Dave or more frequently Mark needs advice from EEI, it'll be spelled out in advance how it's going to be built.
The other, the other thing that I'd like to note is, when I took office, or when we took office, one of the first things that we did is set up a meeting with EEI, and Brad and Tim both came out. And then the chairman of our public works committee, Toby, and I sat with them for a couple of hours. And we kind of, it's always, I'm just going to call it what it is. EEI has always, has always seemed to have been a pain point for this board over the years. And it's, like I said, there, we had a very frank conversation about some of our concerns with EEI. And we also asked for feedback. What could we do better as a village? How could we be a better partner and that kind of stuff? And what is it that our clear expectations are as far as communication? And, you know, some of the issues that I believe that this board or previous boards have had with EEI always comes down to the dollars and cents, right? And so one of the things that we've worked with village staff to do is more clearly communicate to the village board. When you look at an accounts payable, as an example, when you look at accounts payable, you see X amount of dollars going out to EEI. Well, there's an understanding that some of that's built back to every project. And so staff is committed to kind of making that easier for us to understand. Because for a lot of times, I mean, us at NADAS, all we ever see is the money going out, not with a true understanding of what actually is happening as far as day to day. So I think that some of the misunderstand, some of the, the pain points with EEI came from the thermal stuff. And so I think that we all agree, including with EEI, that we're going to work forward, work together on some of these things. And we need to be transparent. So if there's a problem at the board level or an issue, we need to ask those questions. And EEI understands that those are the questions that they need to answer. And they've gotten to the point where they're begging to answer, ask, to answer those questions for us. Because we can't be good partners if we're not going to be a part of the conversation. Brad, was there anything, or Brad or Tim, would you like to add anything?
Oh, Tim, I think, or, excuse me, no, Tim, I think I'll address this. Mike, I think you addressed everything very clearly and appreciate the opportunity.
So this will be the first time that since I've been a part of this organization, that we will have had a contract in place with clear cut, you know, what's ours, what's theirs, what's expected, that kind of thing. And if the board so chooses to ratify and vote in the affirmative, then EEI will be our official village engineer for the next, what, four years till the end of my term.
And I would just make one clarification. First, you'll go on the appointment, and then the second vote will be approving the contract.
So you guys have a contract in front of you. I know that there's probably a lot of questions. And that would be the opportunity that trustees have to ask questions about the contract. I, I know that it's kind of out of order, but I think that one kind of goes with the other. So I'll, I'll let them ask questions about the contract and the appointment. And then if it's, if it's comfortable, we'll move forward with the appointment and then subsequent approval of the contract.
Ms. Grant, my question really is on number seven, I guess. Seven pages, it's not really a page. 7A. Yeah. It starts off with engineer shall provide a project representative assistance.
Yes.
So it's seven. My, my one concern, and that's the only thing I have in the whole contract that is an issue, is the word periodic visits. Because it is so broad. And I understand it's got to be semi, you know, vague because of the different projects that come up. But I didn't know if there was a way that it could be reworded or something to go, you know, not less than, so, you know, so periodically.
It can't, because they're.
That's why I'm asking.
Their periodic visits are when a company's doing sewer and water work, kind of laying pipe in the ground. They're, they're not going to watch them the whole time. They're going to periodically come out and inspect. And that keeps the contractor honest.
I understand that, but periodic visits could be once every three months.
Is that spelled out, is that spelled out in the type of contract too? Like if you're laying sewer pipe, trustee Cole, does it spell out that like these are the types of things that would be inspected? I mean, is that handled at the contract level?
That's handled, that's handled at the bid opening.
For the project, not necess, not necessarily, not necessarily our contract, because with, with the firm, like they would, that kind of stuff, that's my understanding, right?
Yeah. I mean, when they, when they, when they get a water, section of water main done, they have to come out and get it inspected before they can power it up. Same thing with sewer work. But we couldn't afford to have somebody there watching them the whole time.
Oh, no, no, no. Not looking for that at all. But the fact is, is I understand something may be a one-day project that gets done, you know, that needs to be inspected, et cetera, just heard, looked at. There's other things that could be eight, 10 months. And, and so I understand there's, it's very broad. But I just wanted to raise the issue that just, it just set kind of funny with me on that one. If you, if going further down then is the.
Trust Polistrini, can I ask, would you be more comfortable with timely instead of periodic?
Yeah, maybe that, because it's, you know, periodic is just so vague. I guess timely, you could say what's timely. But I mean, that kind of addresses the contract a little bit more and the specific project.
Brad, before we do something, do you, you have any explanation for that word? Gary Allen?
Oh, it, it depends on the project. So, I mean, really, we are out there periodically depending on the type of project. So if it is something that involves public infrastructure that'll ultimately be owned and maintained by the village. So for example, in a Prairie Ridge development, contractors installing sanitary sewer, water main, constructing roadways, you know, we're out there almost on a daily basis checking in, making sure things are being constructed properly, you know, based on industry standards. If it's a private site development, say such as a Stanley machining project off of industrial drive where there's not any public infrastructure, well, then our visits to the project site will be a little bit less frequent. And then if there's any specific infrastructure projects contracted with the village, say the village moves ahead with a water main replacement project, there would be a separate agreement that we would have directly with the village that would spell out our inspection requirements. So typically on major public infrastructure such as a water main or a street improvement project, we're out there the majority of the time. So it's, it's very broad in general. There certainly are industry standards and expectations. You know, we have no problem changing the wording. But, you know, we're, you know, we certainly know what's expected and what the village desires.
I mean, I like the timely, you know, so I'm thinking make, make periodic slash timely visits, because it kind of covers it, you know. And then I liked according to, you know, business standards and stuff. So, you know, I don't need the business standards in there. But I mean, periodic slash timely, I mean.
And you get to the next slide, and maybe you can introduce an amendment.
Okay, on that part, okay.
We'll go ahead and approve the contract.
Okay, okay. So then I will do that as, as an amendment.
I have it written as well.
Okay.
So between the two of us.
Okay. The other thing is, is moving down to D, it says within five working days, report to the village the discovery of any unsatisfactory, faulty, or defective work. Five is what kind of surprised me. If something's faulty and there's a problem with it, it's five days too long to wait. I mean, I put two, two question mark, three question mark, but then again, I don't know industry standards. But to me, if something's faulty and there's a problem, you'd think you'd want to get to it a lot quicker. And five is an entire week and, and weekends. So that is, and then the last thing is, is for number F, periodic reports, the word periodic, but I really think that one's okay, as we've talked. I don't think that one needs time to do.
So when it comes to D, is that an industry standard type situation or?
Certainly, Mr. Reed, if, if it depends on the type of the issue. So certainly, if it's an item that needs immediate attention, we will raise that appropriately to Mr. Hedges or the public work staff. So there's different levels of unsatisfactory types of items. So certainly, you know, we, we understand that if it's a major issue, that'll be brought to attention, you know, as appropriate. We can, we can reword it, not a problem. But certainly if it's something that requires immediate attention, we're going to move in that direction.
Wouldn't that fall within the five working days from, from?
Yeah, it does. Yes, right.
My thought, I mean, for that then to kind of cover would be as soon as possible, comma, or within five working days.
I think ultimately the responsibility is going to be on the contractor, whether it's one hour or five days. If they've done faulty work, they're going to be the one putting the bill to go fix it, whether it's done today or five days from now.
But this is for the engineer to get to the village?
To, for the engineer to tell us that unsatisfactory work was done on a water main or what have you. It's ultimately going to be on that contractor to go out and fix the faulty work. It's going to be there dying. I, I think what this is saying is it's just that they are going to inform us within those five days that faulty work has been done. That's not going to cost us nor EEI any money, as it will be the contractor to issue to correct the faulty work.
This is just notification, not the correction. So, but I mean, if there's, you know, something major that's wrong with some pipes in there leaking, technically they might have to tell us.
But EEI would have already discovered it and would have already forced the contractor to correct it. They're just going to give us five days to tell us that that's what they did.
Is this what you do in other municipalities, Brad? Is it a standard thing?
This is a standard language that we have in our other contracts, yes. And, and as I believe Mr. Cole's pointed out, it's within five days. So it's not, we're taking five days to notify the community. It means that we'll, you know, address it, you know, immediately.
May I ask a question of clarification based on the points that you all brought up really quickly? And I apologize for my ignorance. But so your engineers are out there, they see a problem. Would it be typical for them to address that with the contractor immediately? And secondarily, follow-up would be written notifications to the village within five days? Is that standard operating procedure? Or how would that work?
Generally, yes, that's correct. Yeah, yes, we would certainly address things immediately with the contractor and follow up with the appropriate correspondence. Yes.
All right. So that within five working days is the official written report of whatever transpired? Okay. Thank you.
Are you, are you comfortable moving forward with five days in this circumstance?
Yeah, that's fine. I, you know.
Is there any other questions, comments about the contract? Okay. Does anybody have any other questions, comments, concerns for Mr. Sanderson or Mr. Polson?
I just have a clarification question. On the page with the 20, 2021 standard schedule of charges, when, since we're talking about onsite inspections, let's say we have somebody go out to an onsite inspection, are we looking at hourly charges at whatever classification that person is at, plus the $15 vehicle for construction observation fee, and any of the additional that may apply? Is that how that's calculated? That's my first question. And then I have one other.
Typically, Mr. Kelly, yes, correct.
Okay. And then the second one is, now let's move to the expert testimony. If we have somebody from EEI as an expert, giving expert testimony for whatever the reason may be, are we being charged their hourly rate per the schedule plus the $250 per hour expert testimony rate?
No, just the $250 per hour.
Okay. And what, is the expert then somebody other than what their classification would be up above? Or is it just an up charge because it's an expert testimony? What, help me understand the difference?
Sure. It's the latter.
So it's just a different charge because it's a different type of work?
Correct.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any other questions? I will entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Engineering Enterprises Incorporated as a village engineer for a term consistent with my term ending in May 2025.
Thank you.
Questions or comments? I have roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Polistrini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Okay. And I'm, I'm going to steal Mr. Hedges' thunder and entertain a motion to approve the professional consulting village engineering services agreement between the village of Hampshire and EEI, our newly appointed village engineer. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question. Is this with the amendments that were suggested by trustee Polistrini?
Yes, in paragraph seven or eight to periodic slash timely.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you for reminding me. Okay. Any other questions or comments? We have first and a second. Please call.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Polistrini?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, both of you, for being here and for the services you've provided. And we look forward to our continued relationship moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Reed, and thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
The next item we have is a motion to approve the raffle for the United Walk to include your ace baskets, gifts, certificates, certificates, and tickets for the total value of $500. Questions or comments about the grant application?
I have one. Did both of Karen, Catherine Nelson and Jack Wise, did they both appear before Mary Brandis when they inaugurized it? Because it doesn't list that. She acted here, but not the other one. If you're not realizing, the bulk of them appeared before you. I have no problems with the, you know, the, the raffle itself, but I mean, you're testing here that both people appeared before you and that you appeared before me on this day in person, acknowledged that they signed, et cetera, et cetera. So usually if the other person's out there, they don't sign it. So usually, if the other person's out there, they don't sign it, just the one that's in front of you. Ms. Jen?
What's the date on the raffle? When do they start this?
9:25.
So they'd have time to get it corrected?
Well, the board would consider, we would certainly have a conversation with Mary about being more precise in the future. I don't think that really spoils this application for saying.
Now, well, this is something that we've approved every year now for the last however many years. I don't, with the exception of last year, I don't know that they did the crumb bump last year, but.
But it's not, I mean, the issue's not the particular raffle itself.
No, I understand.
It's just the fact that it's the way that it's notarized.
We will send her for notary training.
It is, I mean, it's not react, I understand, so.
What would you like to do? Would you like to table it until our next meeting? Are you comfortable moving forward with it? Knowing that she's going to go for notary training.
Well, the clerk has already said that she knew that the one was in here, so Jack Wise, so someone did appear before her, and it was somebody that is involved with the raffle. And, you know, for that, I mean, I don't want to cross off Catherine Nelson's name. There's a lacking Jack's signature. All right, hold on a second, should look closer. Yeah, this was significant here. And I'm fine, we at least had one person that came before. But yeah, I mean.
We can get Catherine and she can re-sign it.
I'm okay with, I mean, I'm going to be voting yes for it too, but, you know, it's a village, so we've got to make sure that we're doing that correctly because I immediately see three blanks, realize it's really two blanks, realize that they're missing, which made me question whether people came before or if someone that just came in and said, turned it in without having it actually notarized. It ends question, that's all.
You could approve this subject to having it notarized correctly.
Why don't we do that? Why don't we approve this subject to it being re-notarized appropriately?
Correctly.
Yeah, correctly, Mr. I'll make a motion, or I'll entertain a motion to that back.
Second.
Somebody has to make a personal.
Oh, so sorry.
It's an old habit, I'm trying to get over it.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments about the raffle application? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Strini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coles?
Aye.
Motion passed with zero.
I'd like to spend just a moment introducing the next three items on your agenda that are all related, C, D, and E. These are all related to Briar Hill Ventures, which is Midwest recycling. We have with us tonight President and owner Steve Bergman, who testified before this group back in February and made a rather lengthy presentation about the business. I realized this week, thanks to trustee Fodor, that three of you were not here for those presentations. So let me just bring you up to speed on the legal, on the process and where we are. You did approve an extension of a personal development agreement and then an extension of the development agreement back in May. And that was because they had not yet closed on the property. This week, they closed on the property. Mr. Bergman came in and signed the development agreement, which had been prepared and was waiting for his signature. And at that point, now they can proceed with annexation, zoning classification, and the special use request, which are the three ordinances before you tonight. So I don't want to describe this as a formality, but in a sense it is, the village has already approved the development agreement, and these are now the next steps in the process. But Mr. Bergman is here to answer any questions that you have about his company, his process, process that they will be doing on this front.
Before Mr. Bergman speaks, I want to say this, because we were here and the other trustees can attest to this, it's very rare when you meet with an individual that is annexing into the village or wanting to open a business that is as concerned about how he is viewed or will be viewed by the village and/or community. He takes a great deal of care into his decisions and really believes in partnership. So it's just, it's really kind of a refreshing company to deal with, and he's a great individual in the conversations that we've had. And like I said, normally, when developers come in, they come in with their hands out, it's more this guy, Mr. Bergman is exact opposite, so.
I think I mentioned this in the email that I sent all of you in response to trustee Fodor's questions. This is very much a family business. I can only think of one individual who's not everything like using the business. And as Mr. Bergman had purchased his daughter Jamie, he has 65 acres up on Allen Road, which is a new purchase that they made as well. And in addition to the 17 acres for this project, they're in the process of closing another 170 acres that will be, that we're working with them on some land use planning.
You've actually closed them?
Yeah, that's what you have now closed them, the entire property. So I don't know that we need a presentation for Mr. Bergman, but if anybody has any questions, he's certainly here to answer your questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Bergman? Mr. Bergman, do you have anything you'd like to say in the board?
No, just somebody's got concerns, I want them here too. Just reach them.
I think the presentation from last February, I'm sorry to be very prepared, but it was very thorough. Who wanted?
Ms. Fodor?
I was going to say, I sent a list of questions.
I've got it here in front of me.
Okay, and I was going to say that Mr. Hedges sent me, you know, pointing me the right direction for each of these from December meeting, as well as the video, I believe, from that February meeting. So I did actually watch your presentation and read all of those materials as well. And I think the only question of these 12 that I didn't really have an answer to was number five, what type of environmental impact will this plant have on the surrounding area? And I was specifically thinking about when you are grinding down the concrete and things like that, it's going to create some dust, and it wasn't clear if that was going to be indoors or if that will still be outdoors. And knowing that concrete dust, I mean, we had a conversation about grinding concrete in town and how it has to be wet down because of some of the contaminants and the silica and things like that. So I was just curious, how are you when people come?
We water, we break concrete.
Okay.
Me, I guess my bigger concern above the community is the community of my employees, and I want to make sure they're safe and that we're abiding by OSHA rules. So they're the first ones that are impacted. So we want to make sure that they're safe. And from my experience, if they're safe, everybody, you know, moving out in a radius is safe as well. So we don't, you know, we don't want dust either for, just for those reasons. It's not good for the people, it's not good for the equipment, it's not good for anything.
I appreciate that. Yep, I mean, having driven down 90, I'm sure we all have, and there are several different companies that do that kind of work, and maybe they're not allowed careful.
Well, I mean, Ozenga crushes right across the street. They do it just exactly the same year we're going to do, okay? We probably would only do that once a year anyway, so. Anything else?
Just a brief question, because I'm not as familiar with that road area. Are there residences anywhere around here? Or is, I mean, I know it's.
The Tagamans live across the street on the east side of Briar Hill.
Okay.
So that's the only residence that I know.
And they, I mean, when all this was going on, because I know it happened over a year ago, everybody was signed with it and they knew what was coming and.
They're the people who bought the property.
Okay, that's fine, that's good to know, okay.
You're welcome, thank you.
My other question is technical, though. No, not so much for you, but I mean, but it's a matter of, is the, we have three different ordinances, and I know we're going to do them all separately, but the legal description on the last one appears to be different or not exactly the way the other two ones are. And that's, I just wanted to make sure that it was 100% accurate. If you pull all three of them out, that last one is just different. So the first, the other ones, you know, include, you know, how many acres or less, how many square feet in it, and then they have a different part on the top. Compare them all for the legality of the description, but it's a little different.
Schuster, can you speak to that?
I can, thank you, Mr. Hedges.
Excuse me.
The annexation is for approximately 12 acres of land that is not yet in the village. The, there's an additional approximately six acre site, number one, that's in the village, number two is already zoned M-2 industrial. So the third ordinance for the special use takes in both the 12 acre site and the six acre site and allows a special use on the entire parcel or entire property. So that's why it's different.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question. I just want to verify, and this is for Mr. Schuster as well. I believe for the third one that we will discuss, for special use, there needs to be a public hearing, correct? Did we, did we do the public hearing for a special use or the zoning board of appeals do a public hearing?
Yes. Yes, there was a two-part inquiry at the public hearing. The first was whether to rezone it in the M2 industrial district, and then the next question was whether a special use ought to be granted. The findings of fact that were rendered by the Planning and Zoning Commission address both of those separate petitions.
Okay, and those were published as per the ordinance and made available?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Is this a good time to make comments about this?
Whatever you want to do.
A lot of things we want to do. Okay, I just wanted to say thank you very much because the presentation that you did prior to us coming on the board answered almost all of my questions. So thank you for being so thorough and, you know, having that done. I apologize that you didn't know about it before, but it must have been one of the meetings that.
Right, well, if it was in December or February, you might not even have monitored it.
No, she was very.
With that, I will entertain ordinance number 21-34, ordinance annexing Briar Hill Ventures property. All right, questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coles?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Strini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Motion passed with zero.
Next, you have the ordinance that will classify the property that was just annexed into the M2 general industrial zoning district. So with that, I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 21-35, classifying the newly annexed property in the M2 general industrial zoning district. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have a question. I thought we had two ordinances on, or two annexations, and then the ordinance on special use. Which one is this, or am I off?
You have three ordinances. One is annexation, the second will be zoning, and the third will be special use.
Oh, the classifying is zoning. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions? We have a first and a second, please call the roll.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Phil Coles?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Strini?
Aye.
Motion passed with zero.
Finally, we have ordinance 21-36, ordinance approving the special use for recycling center on Briar Hill Ventures property. If there are questions or comments, I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance 21-36.
Just one quick one, it says that it's got to be commenced within one year of the date of passage. We're all good with that? For having it, the grant of a special use shall expire if not commenced by the owner within one year of the date of passage. So we're going to move forward on it in a year?
So I guess it's more of a question for Mr. Bergman, is a year enough time?
Yes.
Because if not, we can talk about that now, or you can come back to us if something happens.
I mean, we're trying desperately to make some progress in this space.
That's what I figured.
I'll be in big trouble if it's in here.
Say, answer your question.
Yes, it does.
Okay.
I would move then.
Okay, we have a second, please. Questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coles?
Yes.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Strini?
Aye.
Motion passed with zero.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bergman, for all of this, and welcome to the village of Hampshire.
Thanks for having us.
This is your chance to make a clean getaway. Have a great holiday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the next item, we would ask this consideration of a motion authorized by the village manager to negotiate easement agreements with property owners for the Gastro Water Main project. I believe you're all familiar with this project at this point. I've spoken about it several times since the budget discussions back in March and April. This is roughly a $1.6 million project with our new federal funding. We are, we now have adequate funding between the recent federal funding and three member initiative grants that we have, we now have adequate funds for the entire project. So we're now ready to start spending funds. And the first step in this process, Mr. Schuster's done a really good job of negotiating with these residents. We have the framework of an agreement with the residents right now that they're going to share with you, as Mr. Schuster did in the summary memorandum, that we expect this to be roughly $33,000, which I believe is reasonable. You might, those of you who've been on the board for longer recall it in the past, when we were unable to get easements from these same property owners. When I came on board, I started asking questions, why? When I learned that Crown Industries recently received easements, or Gas recently received easements, well, they paid for them, which is typical. I won't say that it's because these are not local funds, they are funds the village spends, whether, regardless which source they come from, but I think these are reasonable fees given what these property owners will be providing. And incidentally, because of the easements on both, this is a rather unusual easement arrangement, where property owns on the east side, own to the opposite side of the road, plus the east, the right away on the opposite side of the road, and property on the west side, own overlapping, have rights to the opposite easements on the opposite side. And because of that, and some existing cables along Gas Road will be going right down the center of Gas Road. So this, the entire road will be torn up and then repaved, so that'll be part of the project. So that's what this is all about, and the first step in the process now, first puzzle we'll actually be spending other than engineering will be these easement agreements. We're ready to proceed with those with your approval.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hedges?
Oh, I've got a few.
Perfect.
How did it transpire that the east side got to the west side, the west side got to the east side, by the way?
Mark, can you describe the history of that? I'm not sure we know how low that goes.
Yes, I would explain it this way. Gas Road is not a dedicated road. It's not uncommon in rural Illinois that roadways are simply established and then acquire or take on an easement right by what's called by prescription. So it's an undefined right to use that property as a roadway. Because of that, when you seek to expand the use, for example, by adding a water main to it, it's not allowed. It's an easement only for a roadway. So we discussed that situation with the owners on both sides of the road and came to resolution so that the water main, they will not object under these agreements to a water main being put down the middle of that roadway.
Do we, do we maintain that road now?
No, it's a township road, and the township road district and Mr. Walker have been apprised, they've been kept in the loop as to what the village's plan is and what's going to occur.
Is there a road? Just a clarification, we do have the northern part of that road, which is adjacent to Great Union, the new project, so the longest to the north, just before you get to Route 20, that is village.
So we own not only the road from Plannigan North, but we also own the easements?
Well, we don't really, we, let's say we maintain the roads.
Okay.
I think Mr. Schuster just explained how it really not, we don't own any of it, but we're.
Did the homeowners pay to put Gas Road in?
I'm sure they.
That I don't know historically, but it's. That I don't know historically, but it's it's maintained by the township.
And this will be one of several roads that we've talked about just recently, where we I plan to go back to the township and try and negotiate intergovernmental agreements, so we won't be stopping at one point in the middle of the road. The same is true on Briar Hill Road at the railroad tracks to the south is township to the north is village, so I hope before we before the snow flies, we have an intergovernmental agreement that I'll bring back to you for for approval.
Prevent any means to trade miles so that we're not, like he said, you know, popping half the road. So part of this also says any firewood to owners. So is that to say that we're going to cut trees down and then chop them up for them for firewood?
If we do, that will be theirs.
Right, but we're not going to like split it make firewood.
You know, that's not our plan.
I that really wasn't contemplated. They just want the right to any any trees that might have to be taken down.
And how long did this take us to get to this point, not monetarily, but negotiating?
It's hard to, you know, we took a run at this like eight or 10 years ago. So it's been a very long time, but this just this to get to here probably six months, and then the funding was the question. So we've been a little bit on hold to for the village to be sure that the grant monies were going to be funded and and paid out so that there was enough funds to now finance the project.
I asked Mr. Schuster to start these negotiations last about a year ago right now, July last year.
I remember talking about this when I first got elected eight years ago. If we if we run into these things in the future and we actually have the money to do whatever we want to do, do we have a timeline before we tell these people, you got two options? You're going to sit negotiate with us, or we're going to eminent domain you? I'm serious.
I'll defer that to our attorney.
Well, that's always an option to use that technique. Eminent domain. In this particular instance, you know, years ago, it was not the decision of the board to pursue any eminent domain and and rather sit back and put together the funding for the whole project. In in this go around, it it really wasn't necessary. We found favorable parties who were willing to talk and and work out the skeleton of an agreement. Mr. Hedges will now finish that off if you authorize him and and sign and conclude those so that this step of the whole project planning will be in place.
Thank you. So do we see this only goes from Big Timber to Plannigan? So north of Plannigan to the water tower is
ours to mess around.
That's already a village street. And and the water main comes to the south end of that location so that it can, that's where it will be connected.
I don't know. Plannigan is, I guess, south of Point.
Yes.
Into the water. Right.
Will we be widening the road from Plannigan to Big Timber during this project?
No.
So we'll still have widened that super town.
Yes, that'll continue to be township road.
Okay. And did I read correctly, you said that was something that is on the list of things to do is to discuss that and attempt to get an intergovernmental agreement at some point in the future?
For just for plowing. Right now, we have several roads in the village that are township in that village, and we stop and they start. It's just not very productive. That that was the case years ago. And at some point, the payments got out of balance, so villagers started paying the township for plowing instead of just swapping. I think at some point, the village board, I'm not sure anybody on this board was still here. I think it predated all of you that the village boards. There was there was a little animosity, I believe, in separate ways. We've had conversations recently about Briar Hill Road and other things, and I in love very well with the township. Transportation department, so I think that'll work out this year. Works well when everybody plays nice in the sandbox.
So you have any other questions? I will entertain a motion authorizing the village manager to negotiate and conduct easement agreements for the property owners for the gas and water main projects. So move. Second. Call both please.
Mr. Coles.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Ms. Fodor.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Ms. Paul Stini.
Yes.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Motion passed zero.
Thank you very much. At this point, I give it to Trusty Coles, if you have any review of the streets department report.
No, I don't have anything. I this is the first I've seen of it in my back end, so.
You have before you the street department's August report. And Trusty Paul Stini would be happy to know that we used our sweeper to sweep the town twice.
I was excited.
We didn't get your picture either time, I don't think. So you you can even see before you that they've been very busy. This is a very busy time of the year. So much more so as we go in the next couple of months.
The only thing I do have is Lori, would you have any numbers from Davey on the combination backhoe? We spent about a hundred grand fixing this combination backhoe so far, and it was in the shop for a month. It was in a month or a few weeks, at least. You had an loader unload.
It was about three thousand dollars in accounts payable.
That's all.
The repair this time, yes.
This time, and last year wasn't like twenty thousand, or two years ago was it? Thirty thousand dollars?
I don't recall. It was, there was
Pretty substantial.
Yeah, the front end had to be rebuilt at one time.
Yeah, we spent about eighty thousand so far fixing that hundred fifty thousand dollar piece of equipment.
We will be bringing the capital budget back before you again in October. Expect to be October, depending on when we start to see our distribution of census funds, funds distribution based on the census. So if stories able to do a forecast, which we hope will be October, then we'll be revisiting the capital budget, and that's that would be a good time to consider that. Easy work. Which is not in the current, not in the current capital.
Mr. Hedges, on this report, I mean, just out of curiosity, then, I mean, we had, you know, tree trimming, we had storm drain issues and damages and four point four one amounts of rainfall. How did the village, I mean, how did it go? I mean, I'm next to the huge retention area, and it kind of filled up, not a whole lot, then went down, which is good.
Actually, I think it went very well this time. We have one one house over here on Jackson that gets close every time. But we had three issues really when I arrived. Highland Avenue was the one that was most talked about. That's now been corrected. We found the funds to do that last year. The other one is Panama State. We didn't have a lot of flooding at Panama State this year in the summer rains. But we did, I mean, the two rains we had last spring, we had four point four inches both times, two weeks apart. So these four point four inches were spread over the month of August, which was a pretty rainy August compared to when we had in May, which is almost nothing. So yes, I would say that the storm sewer system managed it very well. In fact, Dave himself and probably Bill were over here watching Jackson, and I think Dave told me it took six minutes for the storm sewer to catch up. And they got into the front yard of the homeowner over here, but didn't really threaten the house.
Thank you.
The next item, if there are no further questions, then is the building department report, which is prepared by Mr. Ray. You can see that we had a total number of twenty two permits, just one house home permit for the month, which is just a matter of timing. And you can see that our average plan review time is two point two days, which is well under the time we experienced in the past, and also well under our target of five days. The number of inspections is two hundred and sixty five, which is quite a bit. Permit these collected are thirteen thousand dollars, one hundred and sixty two. Josh also mentioned here that the NARS has a final engineering plans for Tams Farm subdivision, which you all recall is a hundred eighty two homes. And they are grading up there now. You've probably seen the activity. And then we are currently in discussions with the fire protection district and SIG Bill to update our current international code from the two thousand and six edition to either the two thousand and eighteen or two thousand and twenty one edition. And we'll be considering that in the next few weeks. And that will come back before you consider it. And with that, I will turn it over to Finance Director Lyons to present our financial statements for July.
All right, so I've tried to summarize the same type of information for our July financials. This is the end of the first quarter or three months of the village's fiscal year. Honestly, we're we're right on track. As Jay mentioned, we will be seeing a bump in our per capita income, which would include income tax as well as motor fuel tax. I'm actually thinking that we probably will not start to see that if it follows the same, so nothing's been the same as the last census. But if it does follow the same pattern, we probably will see an increase in income in the month of November. So I actually budgeted for December. So I believe that we're on track, in other words, so. As you can see from the key indicators in the general fund, sales tax is above estimates, income tax is spot on right now. Use tax is a little bit lower. We do believe that that's due to the leveling the playing field, if you will, with the online collection of sales tax and therefore less use tax reported on your personal tax returns for that purpose. And then video gaming is very strong. So as far as our other tax revenue, utility taxes are down a little bit. That there is some seasonality with respect to that, as that is collected on gas and electric accounts. Places for AD tax is below our estimates. We are collecting our two percent now and finding that some people are using the right forms, yet using the old population, and so having to make some calls, and we'll we'll be catching up on that, I feel confident. Building permits are strong. Again, a lot of seasonality with that. However, we're possibly expecting some basements in Tams Farm, which will help that a lot. Finance fees and reports are still below our estimates. Again, the courts just don't seem to be as active as they were prior to the pandemic, so I believe that that's part of that. And then towing fees are very strong and restricted for lease purposes. I'm a month behind Josh on the new home permit, so last month we had fourteen, well, we've had fourteen for the year. We had two in the month of July. So he reported that we had one in August. With respect to property taxes, we are at the fifty percent point because of having one installment collected, and we're actually a little ahead of that at fifty four point eight percent. We'll see that jump, obviously, in the month of September, when we collect that second, or excuse me, in the month of October, after we collect the second installment in September. As far as expenditures looking a little bit odd, some of these are the same ones. We did add software licensing. We have paid for our ERP license for the year, so that is causing a big jump in our expenses for July. The nine one one services have been paid for, as you saw on accounts payable. And then police other professional services, that is the Lexi pool training and what do you want to say?
Some attorney speaking there too?
Yeah, well, certainly, but the big one is Lexi pool and the fact that we implemented that and paid the annual licensing fee, so that's that. And then the street capital is also the financing, the street super, which we're going to continue to see as as an issue. With respect to the other two operating funds, those being the water and sewer fund, water sales and sewer service sales are at twenty three percent. This is basically just a timing issue because of our bimonthly billing cycle. If we were to look at it today, you know, the collections of our our past billing cycle were very strong, so. Let's see, on sewer other expenses, as far as expenditures looking a little bit out of whack, that included the IEPA loans that we discussed at our last visit. And then we have paid for the annual IEPA permit at seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. So unless you have any questions, that is my report for the month of July.
This is Aaron. I just have one clarification. Lori, first, thank you very much for this and for providing the insights into this. This is wonderful. You spoke briefly about the property tax, so I'm looking at the budget. The budget versus actual report is a great view into where we thought we would be year to date versus where we actually are year to date.
Yes.
In the breakdown one, where we look at the general fund revenue zero one for property tax, we had budgeted that year to date right now, we'd be a little over two hundred and seventy seven thousand, but our actual is six hundred and eight thousand. Now, I would assume that we budget, knowing when we get our payments and that we would have counted that in, so is is this safe to assume that we have significantly higher property taxes coming in than expected? Or where where's the variance coming?
Seasonality into property taxes, the the system does the annual budget and divides by twelve, so.
So the year to date budget is not actually where we thought we would be year to date. It's it's one twelfth times the number of months that we've had within this fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so maybe a little less accurate than what we would look at, right?
I'm sorry, I interrupted.
Oh, no, I was just saying that then this isn't really like when we look at the year to date budget, don't take that as the the gospel of this is where we really should be right now. It's if we divided that evenly and there was no seasonality, that's where we would be, but the majority of this does have seasonality, correct?
The majority of the budget has seasonality?
Correct. For example, if there's something that's a project that's budgeted to happen in the late part of the fiscal year, from what I'm understanding, the software will take that total amount, let's say, I don't know, for easy math, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and it will divide it by twelve and say twelve thousand dollars every month. And so what the year to date of that expenditure isn't actually what we would have expected to spend on that year to date, because the project isn't slated to happen till the end of the year, so it's not a completely accurate representation of where we where we thought we would be at this this point here.
Yep, I completely agree with your statement.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. But this is great, so thank you for for providing that.
We do continue to look for ways to improve this and make it more informational, so if you have suggestions, please let us know.
This is not part of the agenda, but I just thought I'd give you just a very quick update on the water bill relief program. So we had thirty three applicants. I believe at my last report, we had maybe eight. So as you know, at my last report, it would have been on a Thursday, and I believe that we had a bill due on that Friday. So of course, at the very last minute, we got a flurry of applicants, so of the thirty three applicants, thirty were eligible for the program. The other three had extenuating circumstances. All of them, I waived their late fees and offered to amortize their their bills over twelve months, so they are on payment plans as well. Of the thirty that were eligible for the program, the total bills outstanding at the time of their initiation of the program was twenty six thousand six hundred and twelve dollars. I waived two thousand four hundred and forty nine dollars in late fees, and the water bill relief program totaled deductions or reduction in accounts receivable of nine thousand eight hundred sixty four dollars. So from twenty six thousand and the waivers, we went down to fourteen thousand three hundred dollars in round numbers with an average installment of fifty dollars and sixty five cents. So on average, I think the outstanding bill was just over nine hundred dollars. Late fees waived was about eighty five dollars, and then we relieved fifty percent of the water bill up to five hundred dollars, depending on their circumstances, so if you had COVID or had a family member that had COVID, you received two hundred dollars. So the average of the water bill relief was three hundred and eighteen dollars.
I would just add that I think Lori did a wonderful job dealing with it very compassionately, and Mary as well, who who's usually the first person they talk to, but the two of them handled most of this project, and they handled very conventionally. But the two of them handled most of this project and handled very compassionately. And I think provided very importantly, at least 30 of our estimates.
Thank you very much. Well, the entire staff, I mean, you guys poured your heart and soul into that program. For next, you guys poured your whole heart and soul into that program. Well, we did, we take it seriously. And even even outside of this program, just throughout the course of all of this, the staff here has been fantastic as it comes to resident concerns. And COVID fatigue is a thing. You guys are you guys are rocking it, for lack of better terminology. There hasn't been a single complaint. Bringing it in there when it comes to COVID relief, COVID fatigue. We kind of support one another and support the other organizations as well.
I just got one question. On the revenue side, I didn't look through all of it. Is there any revenue that we recovered from the concert event from the cave?
The cave has been billed $750, which was equal to their profits. They provided their financial statements. So they have not yet paid, but they have received their bill.
Have we determined what the cost to police that was?
It was approximately $2,400.
So for future, for a for-profit event, then that's what they did, for profit. We're getting 700, but we cost us 2,000 what?
Okay, that was that was my decision, Trusty Cole.
I understand that, but let me finish, please. So for a for-profit event, we're on the hook for $1,300 for a for-profit event, right for the community and everything. But that's what it is, right?
Okay. I think I think there's a little bit more to that. I think that they thought that the turnout was going to be more. I think that we had a bigger police presence than we needed to. I think this was a learning experience for the village. Not saying that we needed that, maybe that was the wrong terminology.
No, I'll be honest, I overstaffed not knowing what the actual attendance was going to be. It was anywhere from 500 to 1,000. It was scaled. So it was, you know, it was my it was my deal to staff it the way it was.
When 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 the cave came to us originally, they came with really high numbers. We scaled them back for safety, was something that we'd never done before.
I get it.
You know, the next time, the next time around, I don't, I think that we've all learned some things. And maybe we won't be, as you put it, on the hook for $1,300 next time. That's where I'm hoping.
I think it's, I mean, just as like two cents and stuff. I appreciate the fact that you had it overstaffed because if it was understaffed, that's awful. And it's the first time, so I wholeheartedly support that. And I mean, recalling it, I mean, we were excited, I was, when that came up because our businesses were really hurting. And if there was an opportunity and a way for somebody to be creative and find a different way to to help themselves stay afloat, I commend that. Yes, it did take some money out of our offers and stuff, but I think it was something positive in the community too. And a learning experience, we'll do things differently next time. But I think it's important for us to reach out to that business community as well. I think that we did it for us. I hope that's not all her profit. You said that her profit equals.
It was, we sat at this table and she and her brother shared with me their complete financials for the event. And they made $751 profit. So I decided, to your point, it's really not a for-profit benefit, even though it is a for-profit company. And I just didn't think it was appropriate for them to have to go in the hall for that.
And we got other businesses benefited from the traffic downtown.
No, no, I just wanted, I just wanted to get that clarified, that's all. You're not against it.
Oh, no, I didn't, I didn't understand. Okay. Anybody else have any questions about the treasurer's report or finance in general? As long as we have Ms. Lyons here this evening, the head of finance. Well, that's that is what they call, that's what they call a professional segue because that's next.
So the next thing we would ask is your consideration of a motion to approve the September 2nd, 2021 accounts payable to personnel of $258.05.
Any questions or comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I do, but. Well, but. Fill the motion and then ask your question.
So, well, not about, not about the employee one, right? This is for $258. So why don't we, let's approve, let's approve the small one. And then we could ask the questions about the. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the employee disbursement part of accounts payable for $258.05.
Well, now you're entertaining questions, yes.
Yeah.
Now you have a motion, okay. Question about page eight.
Oh, wait, no, 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 no. No, these are two separate motions.
Because.
Unless your question is.
Yeah, she's listed on the.
Okay, so this is appropriate, all right.
Yeah, because it's listed on here for three employees or listed officials. One with his son, David. Page eight, there's a chart. Jewel Target Anacin, just curious, what's that about?
That was for our Kumi Creek booth, the suckers gum, all the stuff to bring the kids to a table.
Sorry. Nobody ever asked questions about employee disbursement?
What's this crazy? Like, okay, bizarre. That's all.
Did you get the sucker and then go your man?
No, I just wanted to know.
She's. Well, this week, I'm sure, actually. All right, so wait a first, a second, can I roll call, please? Unless we have any more questions about suckers?
Nope.
Miss Fodor.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly. Mr. Cal.
Hi, sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Mr. Coath.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Steny.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Motion.
Thank you. Now we would ask your consideration of a motion to approve the September 2nd, 2021 regular accounts payable of $78,754.87.
So do we have any questions about this, Miss Fodor?
What did Trusty Cole get a question for?
He like, he likes you sitting next to him.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I actually have a question about page nine. Trees that may be a hazard, just curious, where was this tree? And what was the situation? I'm assuming storm damage, but.
This is, is this the one that we had?
I believe so. This is the one in Lakewood. It came down during the storm. And it ended up in a part of a resident's backyard. And so it was a hazard to their grandchildren. It's like an amusement park in that neighborhood. One house has a pool, another house has a gym set, another house has a trampoline. And a lot of kids play out there. This was a big tree that was in the backyard.
And was it on village property? Is that why we?
It was on village property when we took it, when we chopped it up, yes. But to be, I think, fully transparent, a lot of fingers were pointed in a lot of directions. It's a little slice of easement that initially we, we dropped along to the tollway. And Dave Starek really spent a lot of time working on this while the tree continued to lay in this resident's yard for about five days. We checked with the tollway, they pointed to Huntley, Huntley pointed back to the tollway. Eventually, we decided it's, there were four government agencies that denied any responsibility for it. And it actually could be a slice of land that is in no man's land. But since the tree was in the village and impacting our resident, we decided to take it down and now remove it. And if we are able ever to identify whose responsibility it is, we'll try and fill that. But at this point, we took responsibility.
So the roots were in no man's land?
Correct, but the tree ended up in the village, for sure. The good news is it did not do any damage.
Okay, thank you. And nobody was hurt?
Correct. And when I stopped by to visit the resident and tell them what our decision was, she said, oh, I just, I just asked on Facebook who the village manager was because I was going to call and complain. Caught her just a little bit too late, apparently. I asked her to go back on and tell her that I was there, but I don't know. They were, they were very pleased, the couples, elderly couple.
Any other questions?
I have two. And the first one is the, actually, on page one, the very first thing. It's $18,733 for a filter cloth sock. So we have about 11 buildings at the wastewater treatment plant that are involved in the, you know, the treatment process. And one of those buildings is called the filter building. And so there's actually another expense associated later on in the plumbing section under dom, the ant pole or down plumbing.
Yep, that's my other question.
Yeah, so they're very much interrelated. The, these things just need to be changed out periodically. So this is part of the filtering process of, you know, the wastewater treatment. And this is, this is done very infrequently, but it's very expensive. And yep, the clock and the piping was replaced in that building.
Did they determine there was something wrong with it that I had to, or it was just?
Yeah, it was reaching the end of its useful life. And this needed to be done before winter because that part of the building or that part of the treatment plant is is very critical during the winter months. So that was the tag.
Thanks, thank you, trustful questions.
Any other questions about the accounts paid?
Page five. Hampshire fire protection. We painted your building?
No, that's, that's for the, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
That's for the house on State Street that we own.
Yeah.
It was against our code. They use it to, the house that we own on State Street by Chicken of Year, so we own that house that looked like it was falling down.
Second house, this way.
We bought that house some years ago because it was a good deal. And we thought that we could purchase the home. We thought that there was only one other parcel between then and 72. We really didn't have a need for it, but it was one of these homes that was a decent deal to we want.
It's a gateway to downtown, wherever you want.
So, so being that we're focused on code enforcement and that kind of thing, at the current time, the fire department uses that as a training facility or to train because it's a nice facility to have in an old home that climb in and out of the windows, build, blow smoke. So the house was going to cost a lot of money to fix. So it's either we needed to make it conform to code of some kind or not get down. And if it down was $20,000. So I had a conversation with Chief Herman about what their plans for the building was, how useful it was to them. And then we had talked about having the fire department go out and just try to paint the building, power wash the building, paint it. Well, Turner tried to do that and it was a pretty substantial job. And he found some guy to do it for 2,600 bucks. So we agreed to split it because it's our building and they use it to to train. And so for 13 or, yeah, $1,300, it was our portion to have somebody else come out and power wash it, paint it. Fire department coordinated the whole thing. And now the building, while it's not super pretty, at least it doesn't have feeling, paint, conform circle. So that's the long and short, sorry. And the fire department didn't have to do it, neither we.
She made me ask.
Can I just ask you?
So if you drive past it, the Hampshire White House, what color is it?
Yeah, purple or?
We couldn't paint it purple?
You know? You know, I might need that if I keep on the schedule that I'm on. All right, any other questions? Then I will entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable at the cost of $78,754.84 to be paid 104 September 2nd, 2021.
Oh, whoo.
Thank you. Can I roll call, please?
Mr. Paul Steny.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Mr. Fodor. Oh, Miss Fodor, yes.
He's on here. I don't even ask him, I don't know.
Hi, Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coath.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Motion pass six zero, also being Mr. Kelly.
Okay, new business. Wait, no, bill committee reports, let's start there. I got all excited.
I gotta paint the roof.
All right, B D C, what do you have? Anything good?
Sorry?
Do you have anything good for us today?
Oh, I thought somebody else was speaking, sorry. So the only thing I have to report is that the B D C will be meeting next Wednesday for their second Wednesday of the month, regular meeting. So September 8th will be the next B D C meeting. Questions or comments?
He's going to call a roll call now.
Back to you, Mr. President.
Public relations.
Can I say, you got your new newsletters in the water bill. I got two, I was very excited. So I guess.
Mrs. Fodor, you.
Yeah, one to Mr. Fodor and one to Mrs. Fodor. It works.
Because they never learned how to share. The words are.
Separate bills.
No comment, okay. And we will have more to report at our next meeting, how about that?
Public works?
I already got that in your, in your packet.
I'll report.
Okay, now new business. I have something.
Chickens?
Chickens. That'll be, that's not on my list, but we need to come up with some direction. This is a second or third time that's come up in my time on the board. And there have been, you know, there's been a few staff members. There's been a really noisy village manager that's joked about it with me. And there's been a couple of trustees that think it's a really good idea that still sit on the board. I myself am against it, but it's not my village. I'm against it only in the fact that we're having a hard time with code enforcement in general. And if we entertain chickens and that kind of stuff, I'm concerned that we don't have a way to enforce it. However, that's been my stance for the last however many years. And so I haven't done a whole lot of research, not as much as Miss Weber did, obviously, about different programs and, you know, constraints and stuff like that. So it might be who goes to check into like what Gator Bill does and what Dundee does and that kind of stuff at the same time, too. So.
Does our 911 service, is it a flat fee a year or is it, it covers unlimited calls? Okay.
Well, it's adjusted. I mean, they will look, do a look back eventually.
Because the 911 calls will will become big because chickens are going to make noise when you go to bed. And the only, the only recourse we have, you can't call the police department. You can't call non-emergency, you gotta call 911.
Let me, I would like to add, I am one of those trustees in favor of this. However, I am not in favor because there is no code enforcer to enforce it. It only takes one person with a chicken coop to run it for all the responsible chicken coop owners.
Right, your neighbor will have a.
Ooh, yours, I think.
Like a rooster, right?
Yes.
Is it Miss Fodor?
I am.
Is anybody on this side of the guys? Should we at least look into it a little bit? See what they?
I think we should look into a code enforcer before we.
I think that's a fair argument. I think that's what we've been talking about for the longest time anyhow. And I think that we really got some motion behind it now. It is front and center on the newsletter about code enforcement and stuff like that. So I think it's something to keep in mind for the next budget cycle and, you know, really look into that code enforcement avenue.
If I could just address that real briefly. I think you're going to find that in October, we'll probably be bringing before you a process, probably not any notions or ordinances, but Josh and I and Saif Bill have been working on a code enforcement program. And I think with current staff and Saif Bill will bring to you in October, a very exhaustive code enforcement plan.
Would it include chickens?
It could if you, if you choose to make them.
I think, I think you need to, at least because it's something that we've been talking about for a long period of time, at least bring, you know, you know, you know, kind of like a Caesar salad with chicken or without chicken, you know? So can you bring us a budget that are planned with chickens and without chicken?
And it would be important for us to know.
Yeah, I do.
Because the village may incur if we were to approve this as far as how to enforce it.
And then chickens or just code enforcement in general?
Code enforcement specifically chickens. You know, if we were to, you know, entertain an ordinance for those.
Well, you know, the cost of any, the cost of any enforcing any ordinances depends on how compliance is. And that's something that we can find out from experience. She did name a lot of very upscale communities. This is become, this is becoming kind of an upper crusty thing. And my daughter raises chickens, which is why I believe the mayor mentioned my name earlier. She raises.
I said, I said a village manager, I didn't say.
In Boise, Idaho, in town. But anyway, I have no position on that. But we will be bringing before you a code enforcement plan, which could include enforcing anything you choose to.
If you approve chickens, can the police department come out and write somebody a ticket?
That would be dependent on what the rules are and who is responsible for enforcing.
They want to do it if you call. And that would only be. Or we're either dead or.
It would only be the police if it's in the police regulations.
We have to get a pickup truck so you can enforce chickens. We have to get a pickup truck so you can enforce chickens and take them.
Well, and I'm gonna ask them, because we had cows that were loose up in Lakewood and all over, and I'm, I don't think there's an ordinance that says you can't let your cows roam, so...
Pretty sure they're in, pretty sure they're in.
Was it enforced then, when all those cows kept coming?
They were rounded up and put back.
Okay. And they were outside, and they were actually animals from outside of the village.
They visited.
Oh, okay.
They were trespasses.
They were, they were...
And then the turkey?
They were black.
The cows, the cows moved in.
I think when Mrs. Weber was presenting, though, I was in full agreement with her, but all those communities that she named have code enforcement.
I did have a long conversation with...
Actually, trustee Robinson Genoa was one of those communities she named, and they do not have code enforcement, if you remember, we talked about sharing code enforcement with Genoa as possibly a cost savings.
We have, I, I'm sorry, I missed her, I went to Genoa.
And I don't know if, um, maybe, uh, Mr. Hedges, do you notice Elburn have code enforcement as well?
I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, so I think there may be some, I, I understand the argument behind it, I just, if we say that we shouldn't do something because we don't have a way to enforcement, then is that a blanket statement for anything that would require some type of code enforcement in the future for consideration, right, let's take chickens off the table, let's just say any type of ordinance that would require code enforcement, would we say we wouldn't do it until we have a plan for code enforcement, because we have no way of enforcing something that would, that we are considering?
I do want to bring up too, I mean, Chicago, I mean, they have chickens there too, I mean, it's, it is something that is out there, and not that I would appreciate it, but I think more of the roosters would be the most annoying thing, but, I mean, if Chicago has chickens...
Most communities do not allow roosters.
Okay, and you don't always know you have a rooster until...
Until they're born, and then there are ways to deal with that.
As Mrs. Weber had said, that, you know, somebody had made a mistake, it didn't make the difference.
In most cases, you order a kit, and it come with egg oil incubators, so it's really kind of a science project, kids start out, but, but it also becomes uh, egg layers, a lot of eggs.
Uh, trustee Kelly, Elburn's does have a building and zoning division which handles code enforcement.
Okay, cool.
Earlier.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome. So it's just something to talk about, because the resident felt concerned enough to bring it to us, so I think we should do something, just and not say we should, I mean, I'm anti-chicken, but, that does not mean personally, but I'm not one to vote, so...
I would like to point out, she cited 1,200 signatures down there, and if those are residents with our new census population, that's still only 15%, so that's not a incredibly large number, but it is significant enough that yes, we would like to look into their concerns, but it's not overwhelming.
Right. And just because somebody signs their name on a petition, doesn't mean that they're actually gonna put it either.
Or...
Or, exactly.
Yes.
Yeah, so I, so if this passes, I'm just putting it out there, I will not be getting any chickens, I already have a four-year-old, that's hard enough.
Good trade. How late time it is.
The chicken for the kid.
Yeah, there you go. Uh, my other, my other thing would be uh, motor-driven scooters. I asked to have this put on the agenda, and I was advised that I should bring it up under new business, so I'm bringing it up under new business. And we need to look at the ordinance for motor-driven scooters, because there are a lot of battery-operated toys now that can classify as motor-driven scooters, and I think there's a big difference between some of these battery-operated scooters that go 50 miles an hour, 30 miles an hour, or whatever, and some kid that's got a hoverboard, you know?
What's the current code?
The current, the current, the current code defines uh, a motor-driven scooter as uh, a, every motorcycle and every motor-driven scooter with less than 150 cc piston displacement included, including motorized pedal cycle or any electric or gas motor-driven wheeled scooter, motorcycle, or similar motor-driven vehicle which the state of Illinois does not issue a title document or license for.
How about a Barbie car?
That's, that's not covered, that's not...
Scooter, scooter's two wheels. And the point is that those are prohibited on sidewalks.
So then, that opens the door to e-bike as well, doesn't it?
Well, and that's what I said, I think that, I think that we need to have a classification, that we need to look in to see what other communities are doing, because as the code was written in 1985 or adopted in 2004, they weren't around yet, so I'm sure that other municipalities have other ways of classifying what would be a toy, because what had happened, and I'm not, I'm not bashing the police, because the police did exactly what they were supposed to do, there was a neighbor that called and put a complaint in against some kids that were riding their motor-driven scooters on the sidewalk. The code was there, the police enforced the code, officers are not at fault, period, okay? The code is what the code is, and that's what the ordinance is, however, I don't necessarily know that the ordinance makes sense in today's world.
Well, whatever the outcome may, may be, regardless if it's a, a little battery-operated Jeep, or, or what, uh, all we have to do is put in a provision, as long as there's a parent out there with them, then there shouldn't be an issue, because the problem is, is the parents send the kids out to get out of my, out of the house, and they're out there buzzing around, you got some seven-year-old lady walking a dog, she doesn't, that, that, thing's coming at her, she doesn't know if they're, she's gonna get hit or not.
Well, and that's why I'm thinking that maybe we could look at other municipalities and see what they have in their code, because I don't necessarily know that you can specify parental supervision.
Sure you can.
Or can you?
But it's... I think a lot of it is too, that the manner in which they're driven, if you send your kids to playing on the sidewalk, and they're young, and you have a kid that's on a small electric scooter, and if nobody's watching and, and telling that kid not to drive recklessly when they plow into those kids, that's where the issue is.
No, and I completely...
And I agree, we should look at, at the ordinance, but it had, we have to, if we can go beyond that, to try to hook up something to make the people snoozing the sidewalks pedestrian-wise coexist with uh, somebody on a small new electric bike.
Yeah.
Scooter.
Just for the record, only scooters are prohibited, bicycles and electric cars, electric toys are not prohibited, only scooters. And I, I think that's, I believe that's, has something to do with balance and the ability to control.
So to clarify, now I've lost my thought, so I apologize, um, it'll come back in a minute, oh, right-of-way. So I would assume that if we had, if we discussed establishing some sort of predetermined right-of-way that may help alleviate some of these conflicts that are going to come up, that, hey, when you see, you know, this person, or this person, or this person will always have the right-of-way.
That's a good point.
So that we can teach all of our kids and everybody else, I mean, because to the original discussion on social media, there was a question brought up about um, motorized wheelchairs as well, because it comes in disability issues.
Well, that's a lot, that's explicitly allowed within the code.
Right, but, we wanna, you know, make sure that we're addressing all of those issues, because if we have somebody in a motorized wheelchair and uh, Jeep coming this way, establishing that right-of-way may help clarify the issue.
Right.
That's all.
Doesn't the pedestrian have the right-of-way?
Yes.
In the roadway?
Even on the sidewalk.
On the sidewalk, I believe you do too. And this is the only, this is the only single incident that's ever happened?
Well, that's, well, I was gonna say...
It all occurred in 1985, some knucklehead took a bicycle and put a motor on the bicycle, and would be literally going up and down the sidewalks on Jefferson over 30 miles an hour. They call it...
Is the, is the, is the ordinance for specifically just the sidewalk area, or is it the street, or a retention area?
It's on the sidewalk.
Ours is just a sidewalk.
Just the sidewalk, okay. So, scooters going around and around in a retention area at 20 miles per hour, that's not a...
Well, that's trespassing village property.
We would, we would not encourage that.
Okay, and then, the other question then is if they are on their own property on a scooter, motorcycle, whatever, dirt bike, around and around in circles around that house, that's okay?
That's okay.
Okay.
But the minute they cross over the sidewalk or on the roadway, you're not with their property.
Yeah.
But see, if there's a parent out there, then the problem should be alleviated, unless the parents own too, but...
15-year-olds.
That's kind of like, when the police show up, the parent could be out there, how are you gonna prove the parent wasn't out there? It's kind of like, when, when my neighbor's noise is too loud, and I, and I call it in, by the time the police get there, the neighbor has turned it down, so how are you gonna prove that it was, you know?
Your neighbor hit them, I think, yeah, so you gotta...
You gotta verify it's the neighbor, the other way.
The neighbor can sign the complaint.
I just think it's worth looking into what other towns do, that's why I brought it up, not, it's not, it's not a good, I mean, again, the police are doing exactly what the police are supposed to be doing, but I don't like the optics of the police kicking kids off their motor scooters that weren't around in 1985. Uh, you know what I mean, that, that's, that's, I think that there's a gray area that's...
Right, but even in today's world, if you got two kids, and then they're sitting in the sidewalk, and you got barreling down, you still have a problem.
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
But that's where, where we were going at.
I, I completely agree, but I think there's a difference in a motor, guy, a guy on a motorbike, or put a motor on, weed whacker motorback, a bicycle in 1985 rolling down Jefferson, then...
He's not a famous engineer.
Yeah. So anyhow, so that, that's what I got, does anybody else have any new business? Okay, uh, announcements?
Yes. What? I'm getting all nervous. I would like to wish everyone a happy, safe Labor Day.
Thank you.
And along with that note, our, all of our children in Hamtram have gone back to school, and as you know, the governor has reenacted our mask mandates.
Now, is a mandate suggested, or is it no law?
Executive order.
Uh, I just think it's an order.
Is that, is a mandate a law, uh, Mr. Schuster?
No, it's, it's part of an executive order, it's not a law passed by the General Assembly.
So, so a, a business doesn't have to enforce it?
The, the only ones as far as the executive order, correct me if I'm wrong with Mr. Schuster, the only ones that have the authority to enforce the executive order are the Illinois State Police and the local health department.
That's uh, that's been the discussion all along, and to what extent will a local municipality uh, add to that enforcement?
Thank you.
So, anyway, I would like to, as a trustee myself, not speaking for it at all, I would like to encourage all of our residents to please do what we can to keep each other safe, to wear our masks, we still have a large majority of our population who cannot be vaccinated and cannot protect their bodies as they are under 12 years old. Um, and we are seeing cases on the rise in Kane County and across the state, we, and we are also seeing cases on the rise uh, in our younger population, um, that, it's alarming that, I, I can't remember the exact age, but it is a very young age, below the age of 18 that is the leading group of hospitalizations now in our younger population, so I would like to encourage all of the residents to please wear that mask, please wash your hands, please social distance, and I would also like to encourage all of our businesses to go back to the um, agreement that we had earlier on in this pandemic, where it was a no mask, no service policy, um, just to extend good faith to all of our residents, whatever their status may be, vaccination, no vaccination, there, I would like us to, just to keep in mind that there are some that cannot be vaccinated yet to protect themselves, so we need to do our part as responsible citizens to help protect them, especially now that they're in school, we want to keep them in school, because that is where they need to be, I see this firsthand every single day. Thank you.
Any other announcements? I have one. And he was gonna, he was gonna walk out, and we cannot, we cannot, uh, we cannot leave this evening until we all congratulate Chief Thompson on his 40th anniversary yesterday, here, working for the village of Henry.
And he's on vacation.
Where's the cake?
Yeah.
I mean, where's the cake?
You said we didn't think...
That guy in Jefferson in 85 took it.
Maybe he spent down the street with it.
Thank you for your service, Chief.
Thanks for keeping me around this long.
We didn't get a cake, we have a white house, right, all right?
Yeah, it's got a little round.
Lemon jacket and all, right?
Yeah, but you got, you got important... Do you have any like funny stories, favorite memory?
I got a scooter with weed whacker on it.
I probably have, have a lot of good stories, none really kind of come to mind now, there's a lot of firsts for that I've experienced that, you know, within the village, uh, that, we've gone to history books, but, you know, there's just a lot of good memories, a lot of good memories, we, we've come a long way. I can remember where, when we were a box, we would go from Ramkey to French, from Widmeier to Harmony, and we would stay in this box. There would be times you could go to Ramkey Road, roll a bowling ball all the way towards west and not hit anything. Now try to get out, you know, and into traffic, it's uh, it's, it's mind-blowing, I mean, but we have come a long ways, and I think that we're doing very well, and everybody seems to be very conscientious in all their decisions here, so, nothing but good things ahead.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all, yeah, with that, if no one else has any other announcements, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So long.
Second.
Hey, Ms. Fodor.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coath.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Steny.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Motion pass six zero.
Thank you all very much. And resign everyone.